Everyone would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Wicked Stadium, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, for those in the audience, I'd ask that you mute your microphone unless you're actually making public comment. First order of business is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
This is Sean, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, motion has been made to approve the agenda. Are there any additions, changes, or discussions?
Did you want to bump up the health district update?
Yeah, I was going to move the health district update to right after public comments. Sherry has another meeting to get to.
Okay.
Any other proposed changes or concerns?
No.
Okay, hearing nothing, can I have a, excuse me, call for a vote to approve the agenda as amended, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Vote carries unanimously. Okay, next order of business is approval of the minutes. First one from the regular meeting on December 14th. We have any corrections to the minutes?
I didn't, I didn't see anything.
This is Kate, I agree, I didn't have any changes. So I'll make a motion to approve the December 14th, 2020 meeting minutes.
All right, motion is on the table, further discussion, I've got a couple of just minor ones. Joanne, if you'd look at the top of page two where we're talking about the Leverett Spencer House. Very end of the line where you're talking about Friends of the Cove, Friends should be capitalized. And the other one I've got is on page three where we're talking about county equivalent proposal letter of endorsement at the bottom of the page. Cog, as in River Cog, should be capitalized. And then the, looks at the end of the third line down where it starts with council. Actually, that should read River Cog requests a letter of support for the change. All right, can I have a motion to approve, and that's all I have, can I have a motion to approve the, the minutes as amended?
This is Sean, I'm making a motion to approve the minutes for the 14th as amended.
Thank you, Sean. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Carries unanimously, I cue, next item is the approval of the minutes for the special board of selectmen's meeting held December 30th. Do I have any amendment? Sorry, Sean, I talked over you, didn't hear you.
I didn't see anything, I needed a changing on that.
Kate?
Agreed, I don't see any changes.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as read, or as written, rather?
This is Kate, I'll make a motion to approve December 30th, 2020 meeting minutes.
All right, motion is on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, I'll note, motion carries unanimously. All right, at this point, we'll open for public comment, again, comment is limited to three minutes, please, per resident. Is there anyone who would like to make comment to the board? Going once, going twice, no one has indicated, all right. All right, next item is a CRAD update, CRAD is Connecticut River Area Health District, Sherry Carlson is here to discuss it. Sherry, turn the floor over to you.
Oh, Happy New Year to everybody. We have some hope for this new year. First, I'll go over, I don't have numbers, not, they're ever changing, but we continue to have positive cases of COVID-19 in Haddam. No deaths, and what we're seeing, if one person in a family in a household gets it, then most of the people in that household do indeed get it. The, if you've heard of the, the new strain of COVID, we do have two positives in Connecticut. The change in that is that it's one that is more transmittable than the previous, but the virus itself has mutated several times, multiple times since its first arrival. The, the hope that I talk about is that we have, we started two and a half weeks ago receiving COVID vaccine and have vaccinated approximately almost 1,000 people that are all 1A, Phase 1A, which is our nurses, doctors, EMTs, paramedics, first responders that have direct contact with, with potential COVID. We can say that all of our 1A in our five towns that we cover, plus we took on Westbrook, Essex, and Killingworth to support them. All of our eight towns that we're doing have, there are 1A responders and healthcare providers completed. This week, we'll complete the second doses for teams that Walgreens and CVS were doing in nursing homes, assisted livings, and HUD 202 housing, strike teams. So that in itself will start to, A, that is where we're seeing a great, high percentage of deaths that occur, of all the, of the few deaths that have occurred in our district. But overall, that's where we're seeing the most mortality. So now that they are done, because there's 250 nursing homes in the state and about 100 residents per, that's taking, has been taking up quite a lot of the vaccine, and they were a priority. So we're hoping to be seeing more vaccine in the upcoming weeks. So as of today, I'm sure you saw on Channel 8 News, 1B is being opened up. We are going to be starting to work on 1B, 1B, just so you know, encompasses 800,000 people in Connecticut. Those are teachers, daycares, 75 years and older, grocery store, frontline workers, restaurant employees, daycares, FedEx, mail carriers, and a few host of others, essential workers. So we're going to be working with Bob and other, and EMDs to best determine how we will get those different 1B groups vaccinated. Presently, I won't go into it because it's quite involved, all vaccine doses are registered in what's called VAMS, which is Vaccine Administration Monitoring System, which is a federal program. So, and it's all electronic, and people are uploaded via their emails. A pretty cumbersome system for us that use it every day, and probably problematic for those who are not tech savvy. So we'll be looking at other options for grouping our 75 and older, and we'll be working with Bob on that, more to come on that, take a deep breath and hold on. We don't have, you know, that will all happen as we get more vaccine, and now we think that will happen in the upcoming weeks. And I think that's all I have, certainly I can answer any questions for you, if you have any.
I have one question, which is, I signed up through the Step Up Program to volunteer, and I wondered if there's a way I could call to say, no, I'm a retired physician, I'm unlicensed, but I could certainly give vaccines and, and help out. Should I take some, is there a way to take some initiative, or should I just wait until someone reaches me?
Um, you certainly can send, you know, your credentials and your history to us at CRAD, and we are, we are creating a list, and right now, we've been okay, but you know, as our, as our just, just get larger, we certainly will be open to that. So that's certainly a way you could do that. Okay, thank you.
I actually do have two questions. The first one will kind of piggyback, is there any, so I have a family member who's a healthcare worker but not considered a frontline worker, and this person is not over 75, he's over 65, but has a lot of, has a, has a long medical history, is there any prioritization to people who are maybe 65 and older but have a lot of medical problems?
Yeah, I think they're going to fall into the 1C category, so I think 64 to 74 or six, I, I, that hasn't been locked in, but I know there is a group coming up that is not just the older with severe illness, but let's say somebody who's 18 to 60, have the exact ages because they haven't been fully determined, but those with severe cardiac or, you know, congenital concerns or respiratory will be considered before the general population as it's, as it appears right now.
Okay, thank you.
Healthcare worker.
I lost Sherry, did anyone else lose her?
Yeah.
Yes.
We lost her.
What line of health, I mean, what they do, do you mind me asking?
Sherry, we lost you, would you repeat the question for Kate?
So. Oh, I was just going to say, um, the, um, the other, the other healthcare workers in the hospitals that are other than doctors and nurses will be in 1A, 1B as well.
Okay, he's a respiratory therapist, so I don't know where that would fall.
Yeah, he should be, yep, he should, I believe he should be in 1B, and wherever he works should be uploading him into VAMS.
Okay. Yeah, he's, it's, I won't get into it. Thank you, and my other question is, how is the, the testing going? I know I personally had to get tested back in early December, and it was quite a long wait time, and it was borderline impossible to get an appointment beforehand, so is there any relief as far as testing goes?
Testing, testing is, has a higher throughput, and also Community Health Center is going to be going to all self, they're going to hand you a kit and have you do it yourself, so they could be doing that all along the, now, along the line, which would make it quicker as well.
Sherry, just one comment for Kate, is that when we go walking at Hammond Asset, there is, which is a site at the park where people can drive in and get tested, the lines have been very small, and there's a, a sign up all the time showing the, the hours, and I'm not sure it's every day, but it may be every day from 8:30 in the morning.
And the one in Sabre, every day, 8 to 4:30. Or, excuse me, 8:30 to 4, I think it is.
Yeah, that's where it.
Thank you.
All right, Sherry, thank you very much.
Have a great day.
You too. All right, I'd like to move on, the next item is selectmen's update. Since Sherry was just talking about COVID, I'll just throw out some information I have for town purposes. In December, Haddam had 64 new COVID cases, and two fatalities right at the beginning of the month, unfortunately. That compares to 51 cases in November. So far in January, as of, Sunday is the last report I got, which was the 10th, we have 31 new cases this, this month, and I'll echo Sherry's observation, an awful lot of the spread is within a family. It gets into the house and it goes from the husband to the kids to the wife to whomever is in that household. Total cases we have had since the pandemic began and cases were first identified is 215. As Sherry said, we're finishing up Phase 1A of the vaccinations. As a first responder, I got my vaccination a couple of weeks ago now, I posted that on the town website, and still, as I said then, and still today, I have had no adverse reactions, nor has any of the other first responders I've talked to. I've really got to commend CRAD, I mean, I've been impressed with them all along, but I went to their vaccination site in Old Sabre at the middle school, and it was extremely well laid out, well done, and we went through it quickly. As I said, first doses on everyone in 1A should be finishing up this week, 1B should be starting, individual 75 and over, frontline workers and individuals in congregate, living in congregate settings. Best source of information on the status of the vaccine still tends, is the Connecticut State website, the COVID websites, and then there's backup data on the CDC sites. As Sherry said, they're still working on the exact definitions of each of the phases, this is a moving target, you know, be patient but keep yourself informed, the town will do what it can to put out the information, so you know what's coming up and what's available to you.
Hey, Bob?
Yes?
Just one thing to add, if you have, as businesses, restaurants and grocery stores that fall into that 1B, if they can be encouraged to become employer coordinators through VAMS, then they will be able to upload their staff much quickly and more efficiently. And that's all found on the ct.gov, and actually, Bob, I can send you, I took screenshots of every step to do that, would that be helpful?
Uh, yes, please, Sherry.
Okay, I'll send that to you tomorrow.
Okay, thanks very much.
All right.
All right, the last note I'll make on, in COVID, and maybe this was hopeful, wishful thinking on my part, but if you look within Connecticut at the hospitalizations, the numbers are still high, but over the last week or so, you can see they tend to be tending, tending downward. I don't know what that means, it's a, going to be a continued trend, or if it's just that with the cases have moved through from the Thanksgiving surge and we're about to move into the Christmas surge, but at this point, I'll take whatever good news I can get, now please. All right, other things I have, normally I talk about projects, projects, we've got nothing to add to what, since last month, financial budgets have, requests have gone out to the departments, we've gotten some of them back, and we'll be putting together our, this coming year's fiscal budget shortly with, starting with meetings of the, special meetings of the boards of select, Board of Selectment. Last item, I'd like to throw out, public safety related, offices gotten in the last couple of weeks, a few complaints about more than usual of people running stop signs and speeding, number of locations through the town, talked with our croupers about this, I think they put something in Haddam now that they are stepping up their traffic enforcement to try to make an impact on this. That's all I have in mind, Kate. Sean, do you have anything to add?
Just on that, public safety, when I, this is Sean, I do know that they have stepped up their enforcement on Little City Road and other roads, and I just want to thank them for that.
Okay.
This is Kate, I do have a question, um, do you know what's going on in the center of town with the monument or the memorial that's been covered up with a tent? I've had a few people ask, and I just say it's being renovated, I don't really know.
Yeah, that's it, exactly, it's, there's a mason working on it, you know, any masonry from time to time, the mortar starts to crumble, you have to dig it out and replace it and make minor repairs, and that's what's going on.
Okay, thank you. No, I don't. Uh, just quickly, on the EDC front, we're going to be meeting this week, but Bill Warner put together a really nice synopsis, summary of, of how 2021 and what we're looking forward to, that is on the town website, so I definitely encourage people to take a look, EDC will be definitely using that as a guide moving forward, and we're also going to be trying to plan as much as we can for a somewhat normal 2021, and looking forward to 20, a normal 2022 and beyond. So if anyone has any suggestions for any community events, or anything you'd like to see, definitely let us know.
Actually, one last, Bob, Bob and Joanne, you know, it's one, pass on my thanks to the, to the people at the Town Hall, I received the card today from, and their kind words were greatly appreciated, thank you.
Least we could do, Sean. All right. Selectmen's update is completed, let's move on, Jen, I will turn it over to you for the Board of Education update.
Thank you, Bob. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Jen Favelora from the Board of Education. In December, we got a report from Superintendent Hagman, she reported that the State Board of Education gave school districts the option to use remote learning in, in place of weather-related school cancellations, AKA snow days. After consideration, Dr. Hagman decided that RSD 17 would continue to do snow days for the first four inclement weather days, and we would make those up in person in June, because in-person learning is, is ideal for us as opposed to remote learning. If there are more than four days, the superintendent will consider using the state flexibility and communicate it to all of the, the families in the district. As I mentioned to you guys, a couple months ago, we were expecting an update from the Finance Committee, in December, the Finance Committee came to us and updated the board on the district operating budget for the 2021 operating budget, including the COVID-related expenses. This fall, the district received two grants, which I think I told you about before, the CARES Relief Act, the CARES Relief Fund, for $219,000, $740, I said that wrong, $219,740. And we also received the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Grants for $45,545. Additionally, we had COVID-related savings for the district, for example, the summer school program, the ESY program, we did not use transportation for, so we were able to save money. We're trying to narrow things into COVID-related expenses, COVID-related savings, so we can be very clear where we stand. As of December, this is just a snapshot, this is not a end, ending point, but in December, our COVID-related expenses were negated by the grants and by our savings so far. However, this is just a mid, mid-year review, and the Finance Committee was specific to point out that there will be expenses adding up, we will still be paying for PPE, we will still be paying for outsourcing of cleaning services, so that is going to be carefully watched, and another report will be coming to us in February. Outside of the COVID-related expenses, the Finance Committee reported to us that special education and health insurance are both lines that are over budget right now. There were also additional investments in paraprofessionals and interventionists and additional Chromebooks for the students that have been added onto the budget. As I reported to you last month, each school reports to us a continuous improvement plan. This month, the, or in December, the Student Services Director, Dr. Chris Lindsey Stevens, reported her continuous improvement plan for student services to the board, which included three goals for this year. The year, this year, the goal for student mental wellness focused on grades six through eight, with plans to select a social, emotional, behavioral screening system and a curriculum. Dr. Lindsey Stevens reported that effective school solutions, what we call ESS, has been a positive experience for our district by supporting students with identified special education needs, and in some cases have prevented outplacement for those students. Her second goal, to improve the provision of nursing services to our students, is starting with a nursing audit, which is actually taking place right now, of our district health offices, to keep all the practices and protocols between the schools more consistent. And finally, her final goal is to continue to improve the preschool program by increasing opportunities for students who need extended day services, as well as finding ways to increase enrollment of typical peers to a 50/50 ratio. The Facilities Committee reported and recommended, and the board agreed to, stop relying on Haddam for our sand during the snowstorms. Haddam's decision to change the surface treatment, as well as complications that our maintenance crew was, was facing for getting the, the sand to our schools precipitated this decision to become more self-reliant. The district is going to use $14,443 from the capital fund to build a shelter for the sand, and equipment that is usually stored outside will be able to be placed underneath the shelter when sand is not in there. And on our website, for everybody to go watch the Finance Committee's report, it was on December 15th, at the Board of Education meeting, you can find that under District Board of Education, Board of Ed Meetings and Schedules. And I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you very much.
All right, any questions for Jen?
This is Kate, no question but a comment, I was able to watch the HK Telethon during a very quiet day at work when it was broadcast, and I just wanted to say everyone did a great job, it's really nice to see that, that tradition can continue even with everything else that's going on, so great job to, is it Mr. Lewis that still does it? Great job to Mr. Lewis and all of his students. Oh, Jen, you're muted.
Sorry, it's a, we have a new HKTV teacher, Kasha Topa-Finberg is the new HKTV teacher, and I believe they raised over $17,000 for that, and it was a wonderful, I also got to watch it, but thank you, Kate, I'll pass along your, your, congratulations.
All right, thank you very much, Jen, for that report. Moving on, next item on the agenda is our tax refunds. This month, we have requests for six tax refunds, they are all motor vehicle taxes, total $1,099.22. Can I have a motion to approve the tax refunds?
This is Sean, I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds as presented.
All right, thank you, Sean, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Note the motion carried unanimously. Next item we have on the agenda is we have an appointment to make tonight. Sarah Lynn Toomey, the Democrat Registrar of Voters, has purchased a house in Middletown, will be, or perhaps already has moved out of town, cannot serve as the Registrar of Voters. The Democratic Town Committee has nominated Kate Westling to fill that role. I don't see her here, I know she was here earlier. Scott Brooks, our town clerk, contacted the State Secretary of State's Office for the proper procedure, and was told indeed the statute requires that we, allows the Democratic Town Committee to make an appointment and the Board of Selectment to make the final decision. So you should have gotten information on that in your packet. Can I have a motion to approve the appointment of Kate Westling to fill the Democratic Registrar of Voters position vacated by Sarah Lynn Toomey?
This is Sean, I'll make a motion that we, that we, that Kate Westling is, becomes the Democratic Registrar of Voters for Haddam, she's a fine choice.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
This is Kate, so Kate and I actually have worked in election together, and we, we've been training together, definitely want to thank her for stepping up, I know she, she just got into this not long ago, same as me, and so I am very confident that she will do a great job in keeping everything fair and honest, and maintaining the integrity that we expect for Haddam's elections, thank you, Kate. and maintaining the integrity that we expect for Hattam's elections. Thank you, Kate.
Oh, great. So it's a zero-sum game. We gain a registrar and lose a poll worker. Now we gotta find another replacement. It never ends. All right, I will call the question, all in favor of making the appointment of Kate Westling as a Democratic Registrar of Voters, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Next order of business, I really regret saying that we received a letter of resignation from Harlan Frederickson for his position on the Board of Finance. Uh, he and his wife have purchased a home in Waterford and will be moving out of Hattam. It's gonna be quite a loss. I will say, from my years on the Board of Finance, Harlan was, one, very experienced, very knowledgeable, and always the voice of reason in keep, keeping things moving. He will be missed. I just want to inform the, the board of his resignation. Uh, the, the, excuse me, Republican Town Committee has been contacted about filling his vacant spot.
This is Sean, and just from my time on the board, from the short time I was on, very knowledgeable. We didn't always agree on everything, but just was able to share his point of view in a very professional and, and courteous manner, and he will be missed.
Most definitely.
This is Kate echoing Sean's sentiment. Those are some big shoes to fill. So I hope, I hope he'll remain available for knowledge and consulting services. At no cost to the town, hopefully.
That's, that's the nice thing about cell phones. When people move, they generally don't change the number, so we can always get in touch with them.
We know where to find you.
Exactly. All right, last order we have in new business. We have an application for a peddler's permit. It is for solar energy, door, they want to go door-to-door sales. The town has an ordinance that requires obtaining a peddler's permit to do that. However, we also have the authority under the, during the pandemic and the health emergency to make a blanket denial of any peddler's permits. My, and my recommendation to the board is we deny the application because of the constraints of the pandemic.
This is, this is Sean. I agree wholeheartedly. Till we can get some herd immunity, immunization out there, herd immunity, I, I wouldn't approve anybody. Doesn't matter what the business is.
Okay. Kate, your thoughts?
This is Kate. I agree. I think given the, just given the concerns for safety and health, there's, it's just not feasible to approve that right now. And I understand this is probably a very significant portion of their sales, but the health and safety of our residents absolutely comes first. So as, as much as I feel bad that, you know, we're preventing a business from being able to operate, I hope this business can find other ways to, to reach out and conduct themselves in a way that's more safe for everybody right now.
All right, and having your concurrence, we will, I will deny the permit application. That's all we have on the agenda. Any final comments by either of my two fellow members of the board?
I'm just here to.
Yeah. Do they have to wait a certain amount of time to reapply, or can they just, they can just reapply again whenever? Okay.
Yeah, but again, as long as a pandemic and emergency, state of emergencies in existence, it'll just be denied. And that'll be explained to them when we tell them it's denied.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, since we've reached the end of the agenda, can I have a motion to adjourn?
It's your turn this month, Kate.
How do you remember that? This is Kate. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much for allowing us to be with you.